Today is September the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. And I'm gonna ask for a roll call.
Yes, Commissioners. Uh, Erasmo Vieran?
Present.
Obte Teis?
Present.
Jorge Dominguez? Rafael Duñez?
Present.
Abraham Lugo?
Present.
Yonin Arvise?
Present.
Raúl Ugaldé?
Present.
Larry Dovalina?
Yeah.
Carlos Flores? For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have quorum.
Yes?
Yes, he, for the record, you do have quorum.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we do, I know Commissioner Flores and Commissioner Dominguez, Commissioner Dominguez did contact me that he was, uh, not gonna be able to make this meeting, and I think he had a little bit of a minor surgery. I don't know about Commissioner Flores, did he contact anybody in the staff? I know he did contact and said he was, I think he was gonna be tied up in a meeting, so can we have a motion to excuse those two Commissioners?
Estamos con Ugaldé.
Can we have a second?
Second, Duñez.
Duñez, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next item that we have is of the regular meeting of September the seventeenth. I'll give you guys a few minutes to look at them and, uh, let me know what the wishes of the Commission are.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of nine, three, twenty, advise.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second on that motion to approve the minutes?
Second, Ugaldé.
Second from Ugaldé, all right? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, say aye. Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is, do we have anybody, uh, for citizens' comments at this time?
Um, let me get this number right, sorry. I, there's a little bit of a lag, so if you can give it just about a minute, and during that time, I'll make the usual announcement.
Sure.
That, um, excuse me. That is that we ask the Commissioners if you could mute your mics when you're not speaking, it really helps with feedback, so we can maintain the best quality for the public and for the record that this is being recorded. And as well, you're, you're, by all means, Commissioner Villar, if you choose to, you can ask for those to signify, anyone that opposes any motion, that way, no one has to unmute unless they have something that they, they say. And, um, we will be contacting, we have staff that will be contacting both the, the engine, the engineer or the applicant for any item that comes up, so that they're ready for questions. If, if the planning commission has any. And we'll also be, uh, having a phone lineup, so that the public can call in for any of the items that are, for the items that are presented that are public, that require a public hearing, which are the zone cases today, of which we have
Three.
Three. And, uh, we'll, we, our staff will automatically come in if there are any, if anybody is on the line to speak. And so, hearing that there is none, there are no public comments at this time.
All right, moving then right along, uh, we're moving into public hearings and recommendations of inordinance, uh, we're gonna go to five A, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo. By rezoning Lot eleven, block forty-four, Eastern Division, located in five oh three Corpus Christi Street from a B one to an R three. Yes, sir, who's gonna make the presentation?
Mr. Chairman, that'll be me, Fernando Morales.
All right.
Uh, the applicant is Juan M. Ramos and Yolanda Ramos. Property description and location, once again, is Lot eleven, block forty-four, Eastern Division, at five zero three Corpus Christi Street. The zone change request is from B one, limited business district, to R three, mixed residential district. The proposed use will be residential. There were thirty-two letters that were sent out. We have zero opposed and zero against. This is the location map. This is an aerial view of the location. This is the zoning overview. This is a future land use map. This is a street view. This is also a street view from above. This is the construction plans, showing the construction. And the addition that was built above the garage. And above the house. Staff supports the recommendation for the proposed zone change.
Do you wanna just review quickly the reasons? You don't have to read all of it, Fernando, but just, uh, point out a couple things here.
The proposed zone change is in conformance with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan designation for this area as a neighborhood mixed-use area, that includes CBD, R one, uh, R one, R two, R three, R one B, R one A, R O, and A E zoning districts. The proposed use is current and compat- compatible with the surrounding mixed residential uses in the area. This is the proposed motion for recommendation of approval or denial.
Uh, Fernando, let me ask you a question. You mentioned that, maybe I didn't hear you correctly, but you mentioned that this second story was already built? Is that what you said? Or?
Yes, sir.
So?
No, sir, you are correct.
The pro, then, uh, it's already built, so the purpose of the zone change is for what?
For the setback requirements. The setbacks in the B one require ten feet. However, when they built this addition, they did not respect the ten feet, they, they're looking for a five-foot building setback.
Oh, setback on the side you're talking about, right?
That is correct.
In order for them to be in compliance and not have to take this structure down, they would need a zone change.
Why didn't they go to the variance board?
Because that would not be an appropriate, uh, variance. That wouldn't, a variance, that's not an appropriate reason to grant a variance. A, a zone change would be, but that they didn't, without looking or, or asking what the rules were, would, would not be a sufficient reason for variance.
I guess the next question I have for you, was this built without a permit or what?
No, it was built with a permit. Those are, those are the permits that were submitted.
Okay, so then it was obviously, uh, a mistake when they issued out the building permit.
It might have been an oversight, that is correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Do we have anybody on the line who wishes to speak in favor of this zone change?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, this is Rafael Vidal for the record.
All right, put her on.
Go ahead, Ms. Ramos.
Um, well, no, the only thing I just wanna state is that, um, back then, uh, it's gonna be already a year ago, I hired a contractor and unfortunately, that contractor went and took out a permit and needs people that it was gonna be for the rules that I made on top, but, um, at the end, we just found out that they had taken out a wrong permit or non-sufficient for whatever I was building. And after now that they sent me that citation, which I already paid a fine, um, since they first put a stop, um, work, so I paid that fine first. And right now, I'm trying to clear up everything since they made, um, I don't know, I thought the contractor would know the measurements and what he could build and what he cannot build on the, on my property. But then unfortunately, I found out that they did everything wrong, the measurements on the site, so right now, that's what I'm trying to fix. That's why I applied for the change zoning. Um, I was just wondering if you often help me on that, like, um, try to change it so I can instead of moving ten feet, at least move less or pay a fine, which is already done. So maybe pay a fine or something and stay like that, or I don't know, I mean, like I said, I did hire those people and they did everything wrong. At the end, they didn't even, they didn't finish my job, they left everything unfinished and then I had already paid them ahead of time of the money and I didn't get, so they, they didn't pay me back, so since the beginning, everything went wrong.
And just to provide?
Well, that's what I'm doing, trying to fix whatever they did wrong and try to fix it and do it the correct way.
Provide a little bit of clarification, Commissioner Villarreal. The oversight that was mentioned previously was not, uh, building departments. The building department issued a permit that if, if it was followed by their contractor, would have respected the
Oh, okay.
But the contractor built something different, and instead of having them take it down, she's asking for a zone change so she can keep it as it is.
So it was a contractor then who did not follow the building plan that was approved by the building department, okay? Thank you for the clarification.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I may or may not have missed this, um, so the purpose of the building, is it gonna be residential or is the purpose business?
Purpose is residential.
Residential.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else on the Commission have any questions? For anybody on the planning staff or for Mrs. Ramos? Okay, do we have anybody on the line who wishes to speak against the zone, against the zone change?
Uh, Commissioner Villarreal, just a reminder, it's a little hard for us to filter four and again, so, but if we do have somebody on the line, when you ask us to, we'll bring them on if, if, if we have someone.
I'm just asking a question, just procedure.
Understood. So we, we do not have anybody on the line.
Okay, with nobody else on the line, what are the wishes of the Commission?
This is Ugaldé, I'll make a motion to approve the zone change and support staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second on that motion?
Second, Duñez.
Duñez, seconds. For, uh, let me just say one, let me make a comment before we, I call for the vote. For Commissioner Dovalina, we're doing things here a little bit different because of the way we're operating. I am going to call for the vote, but only for those that are against the motion, to signify by saying that they are against the motion. All right, gentlemen, uh, those that are against the motion, signify by saying you're against the motion. With none heard, then the motion carries, thank you. Next item. Is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot five, Lot two of San Isidro Business Park, located at three seventeen Crossroads Street from B four to M one Light Manufacturing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is San Isidro Northwest LTD, Pat Murphy, owner, applicant. And Slay Engineering is the representative. Property description, location is Lot five, Lot two, San Isidro Business Park, located at three seventeen Crossroads. The zone change request is from B four Highway Commercial District to M one Light Manufacturing District. The proposed use is warehouse with inside storage. This permit is used, this, this is permitted in the B four zoning district as per section twenty-four point sixty-six, prohibited use of the Land Development Codebook. There were six letters sent out, we have zero four and zero against. This is the location map. This is an aerial view. This is the zoning overview, which we have M one next door and across the street. This is the future land use. An aerial view from above. This is a street view. And staff supports the recommendation of a zone change. The proposed zone change is appropriate for this location. It is in non-conformance with the future, it is in, not in conformance with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan designation for this area as a mixed-use center, that includes M one zoning, but is compatible with the surrounding industrial uses and the zone change in the area. This is the proposed motion for approval or denial of the proposed zone change.
All right, do we have anybody on the line who would like to speak either for or against the zone change?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, this is Rafael Vidalri. I do have Ramiro Ivara, the engineer of record and representative, to answer any questions that the Commission may have.
Okay.
Ramiro, you're available if, if you need to.
Yes, hi, good afternoon, uh, members of the Commission, uh, Rafael, my name is Ramiro Ivara, we're for Slay Engineering. I'm representing my client, San Isidro Management, and we concur with this, uh, with staff recommendation for the zone change, I'm gonna transfer any questions.
Okay, does anybody on the Commission have any questions, Mr. Ivara? Does anybody on the Commission have any questions for the planning department? Okay, do we have anybody else, uh, on the phone that may wanna speak for or against this item?
Someone from the public here, members of the Commission.
Is there, no one else on the phone? Kirby, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With that being said, uh, what are the wishes of the Commission?
I'll make a motion to support staff recommendation for zone change.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Who the motion from?
It was from, uh, Mr. Narvise.
Second, Duñez.
Duñez seconds it. All right. All those who are not in favor of the motion just made, signify by saying aye. With none heard, motion carries, thank you. Next item. Amending the zoning ordinance map for the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately twenty point zero nine acres out of thirty-two point eight one one seven acre tract conveyed to Robert Muller LTD situated in Portion eighteen, Jose de Bustamante original abstract twenty-one and Portion twenty-one forty-three, Abel Morgan original abstract five ninety-one located southwest of Enterprise Street from A G to M one Light Manufacturing District. Okay?
Yes, sir, once again, the applicant was Robert Muller LTD, Francis Muller, owner, applicant. And C E C is engineering, Edward Ochoa is the representative. Property description, location is approximately twenty point zero nine acres out of thirty-two point eighty-one seventeen acres, conveyed to Robert Muller LTD. Zone change request is from A G to M one, proposed use, the proposed use, excuse me, is transportation. There were nine letters sent out, we got zero four and zero against. This is an aerial view with the master plan of Aquero, showing the location. This is the aerial view. This is the zoning overview. The future land use map. An aerial view with the master plan of Aquero subdivision, with the location. This staff recommends approval for the proposed zone change. The proposed zone change is appropriate for this location, it is not in conformance with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan designation for this area as high-density residential. That does not include M one zoning, but the proposed transportation use is compatible with the surrounding industrial uses north and east of the property and the M one zoning that abuts the property to the north. This is the proposed motion for approval or denial of the zone change.
Okay. Do we have anybody on the phone that would like to speak for or against the zone change?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Rafael Vidal for the record. I do have, uh, Mr. Edward Ochoa, engineer, uh, representing the applicant and is available to answer any questions from the Commission.
Very good.
Duñez, Charles.
Yes.
Yo quiero preguntar si no es una zona de inundación y cuáles serían las entradas y salidas porque ahí hay un parque industrial.
Uh, Ralph, can?
Yes. Ed, Ed, the, the question from Commissioner Duñez was if there was any floodplain or flooding zones in this area, as well as how would the tract get access given that it is adjacent to an existing industrial park?
Yes, correct, so, uh, Commissioners, this is Edward Ochoa with Civil Engineering Consultants. Um, yes, this property does not have any floodzone in it, um, so if you look at the shape of the southern and western boundary of this twenty acres, it's kind of an odd shape. It follows the floodplain delineation. Um, so there is no floodplain on this portion, you know, within our property, we are adjacent to a creek on the southern, uh, edge of our boundary and on the western edge of our boundary. Um, this property is adjacent to, as you can see, some lots, um, on, in the InterAmerica Industrial Park. Uh, my client who purchased this property, uh, owns some of those residential lots. So the first step here was to, uh, rezone this property, and the next step will be coming forward, uh, pretty soon, uh, to you guys would be, uh, to replat the property, um, to incorporate this twenty acres into some of the lots that he owns.
Edward, I think one of the questions that Commissioner Duñez asked, uh, I guess in your planning, was your access point from this property. I mean, uh, if you could elaborate a little bit on, on what you're kinda thinking about.
Yes, sir, so when we move forward with, uh, with a replat of this property, uh, we would replat the, the lots that are adjacent to it, you can see on, on the picture there, uh, adjacent to it on the north side. Or I guess it would be kind of, uh, yeah, kind of on the north side of, of the red marking there on the exhibit. Um, he owns those lots, so we would replat those lots and incorporate this twenty plus acres. So the new, newly created lot would now front Enterprise. And, uh, so that's, that's what they're looking at doing, uh, with this.
So in other words, they're going to add this, these parcels onto the existing parcels that already front Enterprise?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that, if that was directed towards me, I'm sorry.
No, the comment which is being made that these would be added to the lots, the, the existing, uh, industrial lots on Enterprise?
Yes, that is correct, that is correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions from the Commission on this particular item? Okay, do we have anybody else on the line who would like to speak for or against this item?
We do not have anybody else on the line.
All right, sir, thank you. Then, uh, what are the wishes of the Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, staff's recommendation for the zone change, advise.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion, Ugaldé.
Ugaldé seconds the motion. All right, all those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Not heard, motion carries, thank you. Next item that we have is, uh, review and consideration of the following master plans. Item six A, review and consideration of the LaFawn subdivision master plan, the intended residential.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, uh, Chairman and members of the Commission, for the record, this is Rafael Vidalri. An overview, the applicant is AFW Investments Limited. The engineer of record is Premier Engineering and Surveying. It is a fifteen point fifty-three acre tract of land located west of Lomas del Sur Boulevard and north of River Hill Drive. The zoning is B three, the proposed use is residential, and the proposed number of lots is seventy-four. General location map. Aerial view. Street view. An additional street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Environmental, water utilities. Traffic safety and utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Do we have the engineer of record on the phone?
Members of the Commission, Juan Mendive for the record.
Yes.
I have Mr. Armando, Armando Guerra from Premier Engineering on the line, available for any questions.
All right, put him on.
Hello?
Yes.
This is Armando Guerra with Premier Engineering for the record, uh, representing the client, and, uh, we, uh, concur with, uh, comments that were posted.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the Commission have any questions for the engineer?
This is Larry Dovalina, uh, is the sewer line that they're gonna have access to, is it on the River Vega land?
Mr. Ivara?
Can you repeat the question?
Is the sewer line that's gonna service the large transmission line that'll services development, is it on the Vega?
Is it on the what?
The River Vega, you front the river, don't you? Is there a creek? What is that?
Yeah, um, what, what I know is that the actual sewer line passes through the, the, the property, and there's, there's some manhole there. Uh, I know that there is another manhole and another line going through the river, uh, through the city park road that on the south, so it's, uh, we're gonna be connecting to one of those. Um, and, and it's just gonna be through the design process and working out with utilities to see what would be the best option to connect to, to either or, uh, sewer, available sewer.
And if a border wall is built, how will it affect that sewer line?
I believe that the border wall might be outside that, uh, I don't, I don't think it will affect it, uh, per my current knowledge of the situation.
Okay. Any other questions? From anybody? Larry, you have any other questions or any other Commissioner?
No, I'm good.
Okay. No other questions from any Commissioner or anybody? If not, what are the wishes of the Commission?
Uh, Lugo, I may make a motion to approve subject to the staff's comments.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, advise.
We have a second, Commissioner Narvise. All those who are not in favor of the approval of this, signify by saying aye. With none heard, motion carries. Next item. Review and reconsideration of Los Presidentes East master plan, the intended residential and commercial, the purpose of the revision is to combine phases.
Over, general overview, the applicant is JMLG Holdings Limited and MRMD Development. The engineer of record is Howland Engineering and Surveying. The property description is approximately a hundred and seventy acres, located west of Concord Hills Boulevard and east of Cuatro Vientos Road. The current zoning is A G, R one, R one A, and B four. The proposed use is a residential and commercial, and the proposed number of lots, a hundred and eighty-four. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan.
They're doing the Los Presidentes East master plan, reviewing consideration of master plan.
Okay, staff, staff comments from planning. Engineering and environmental, I do wanna make note for the record that the comments that appear on the screen were not actually included in the packet, but they are provided here for the, for the Commission. Parks and Leisure, the utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Do we have the engineer of record on the line?
This is Ricardo Villarreal with Talent Survey.
All right, sir.
Um, I'm just, uh, here to talk about the, uh, master plan. If there's any questions, I know Ken, Rafael, I, I heard something, um, that something appears on the screen, but I didn't quite hear it. Um, was it, was it additional comments or anything?
Just to, just to clarify, um, uh, Mr. Ira, is that there were some comments that were added by, uh, Water Utilities after the preparation of the packet, which are available on the screen. Or should be available on the screen. And they are underlined right there.
I'm having trouble here logging into the link that, uh, that Ms. White sent me here.
Rafael, would you go ahead and read those comments?
Absolutely.
Wait, wait, wait. Uh, this is, I have a question. Can, are those comments on the engineer's packet?
They are, they are not in the packet, no.
So would it be fair to give the engineer time to look them over? Should we move this item further down?
That's definitely, I could, I'd be more than happy to read them into the record, uh, for the engineer.
I just, uh. Yeah, if you can, I, I, I see some that say engineering environment. Are those the ones that you talked about? I just got on, but my, my, my computer's frozen.
Okay. It's the ones that say Water Utilities and I'll go ahead and read them. It says number one, water and sanitary sewer lines with proposed sizes and alignments needed on the master plan.
Okay.
Number two, indicate projected water and sanitary sewer flows.
Okay.
Number three, plan with engineer's seal and signature.
Okay.
And number four, water lines to be looped need to show points of connection to existing distribution lines.
Okay. Um, I don't have any issues with those comments. I, my screen is, uh, is frozen, but I see them now. So I just wasn't quite sure if those were, those were it. Um, I do have, um.
There's one more comment. Just to build a water park. You don't see that one, do you?
I do see the ones, I do, I do have some questions for staff, if anybody's there from engineering or environmental, on, uh, change the phase number for the detention basin to earlier phases or assure the detention is provided in a, in an upcoming phase. So update, I, I guess. This, this is such a large track in this area. And when you run numbers on when detention is actually hit, that's when detention comes up. So the reason for these, um, for these comments here on bring up detention to what phase? What phase would they like us to bring it? I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of a general comment that kind of is not too concerning, but it can be very concerning. Because it kind of gives a, an option of saying, hey, you need to have detention in the next phase. And that's kind of not the way it works. It works based off of, you know, I know we're giving ourselves a runoff letters, but also, uh, the client, Hilltop, JMLJ, JMLG, which is my client, and, and the surrounding clients are in talks with, uh, already starting the process for a regional detention pond in this area because this area is governed by the Webb County Drainage District. So this comment, while I think everybody is, is waiting for that regional detention to be, uh, built. Obviously, we get to a certain point where we need detention. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to build it. But the idea right now is to still build the regional detention pond. So these comments here are a little concerning in that they're just so general, bring up the detention to a previous phase. Is there a specific phase out there? If there's anybody out there from engineering or environmental?
Can I offer a comment, Commissioner Vial?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
This is just a master plan and no phases would be able to move forward without the approval of, of the, uh, and the acceptance, without the approval of the departments and the acceptance by the engineer. So I would propose that, um, that, that the engineer accept these comments. And if he's not amenable to the, the phasing, he'd have to come back with a master plan update. And, and in other words, no phase is gonna get built unless both parties agree, uh, to that. To which phase is gonna have the detention?
Okay. Rick, did you hear those comments?
Yes, I, I did hear them. Um, I guess my comment to that is this master plan revision that we came in is because we, the, the phase for the detention already came up from the previous master plan approval. So the previous master plan approval had the detention one phase later. Since this phase that we're turning in, and you're gonna see the preliminary later on tonight, two phases got combined. And because two phases got combined, it was gonna be, uh, I can't remember with the previous one. I think it was gonna be four or five. It turned into one phase. So everything got moved up. So the only reason this master plan has come in is because of the rephasing that actually benefits the detention as it were previously, um, approved. So as it were previously approved, the detention pond phase now is actually based closer than it is. My, my concern with these comments is the sheer purpose of this master plan revision coming in is just to show the current phasing so that everything matches. The previous master plans that have been coming in, they have always shown the detention pond at that phase. Why change it to a previous phase? Like what makes this master plan different? Is it something that we're not seeing, which we don't see? Um, and that's just, when I go to one stop shop, this, this, this general term basically gives a one stop shop committee member the ability to say, hey, well, the commission said that you have to bring the detention pond to a previous phase. We determine the previous phase is right now, so we want it right now. I, I don't know, that, that, that's just the only thing that's concerning if, if, uh, if we can somehow kind of expand it so it doesn't make it so detrimental to, you know, future phases. I, that, that, that would be something that I would be appreciative of.
With a representative from the engineering department not here, Commissioner Vial, I'd recommend that, uh, if the, if the applicant is not comfortable that we table this item so that he can, this was part of the published packet and, and they could have reached out sooner. Uh, if, if he's not comfortable moving forward, it would be better that he discussed that and, and that the engineering department provide a little more detail, um, that they can be comfortable with. I don't think that's something we can figure out right here on the spot.
I agree. I agree. I agree. Rick, uh, you, are you okay with that? With tabled in the item so that this thing can be worked out with the engineering department?
Well, can, I guess, can we work it out? And this is a one stop shop thing. This, this is a design factor. So I would wanna work it out in a, in, in the one stop shop. But I would just like to change the, um, the, uh, the, the note to change the phase number of detention basin to an earlier phase when it deemed necessary, basically. Or when, when the design calls for it, or, or when you can no longer provide runoff letters. That, that's what I wanted to hear. So it benefits both the client and the city, not just the city. The, and so, you know, for us to delay it two weeks on a general statement like that, I think it's detrimental to my client. So I prefer to move forward. I don't mind expanding on these, um, on these, on these, uh, comments. But it's assured that the detention is provided in an, an upcoming phase for us to.
All right, let me do this. You guys put the master plan on so we can all see it? On the screen? All right, Rick, you see the master plan now. Point out to us, I see where it's got an existing drainage, a detention basin. It's on the right hand side of this particular master plan. I'm not really sure what, can you kind of guide us to what you were, uh, thinking in terms of this master plan? Is that the site that you were gonna go ahead and, and drain to, or is there something else that is coming up? You did talk about a regional detention. Uh, can you sort of shed some light on, on, on those things?
Yes, sir. So the, um, there it is. It just popped up on my, on my screen. So we're talking about the southernmost east, uh, site on, on our, on our master plan. Um, and that's draining towards the northwest. Basically, on the northwest, just east of that commercial is where the proposed detention pond is gonna be. Based off of our master plan. And this was even before the drainage district came into play. We've always shown a detention pond in that area. So if we ever decide to build this out before the drainage district actually comes in and builds a, a detention pond, we would have to build a detention pond within our own site. Now, the Webb County Drainage District was created to tax this area that they're in charge of so that they can maintain detention pond, that they can also, uh, maintain, uh, drainage structures, channels along this corridor. But there is a current project that you all have seen, Los Presidentes Road, that got preliminary, obtained preliminary approval maybe about a couple of months ago. And, uh, that currently about 90% designed already. Those structures on Los Presidentes are being built by the Drainage District and are gonna be handled for the hundred year storm. So that first step actually, um, is like the catalyst so that this regional detention can come to fruition. If not, the Drainage District wouldn't be participating in this project. So all this falling into place is kind of leading us towards the conversations for a regional detention. And they're more, it's not just a, 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 it's not something that just came up. It's, it's, it's been in talks for a while now. Now, going back to the comments, our detention is, as engineers, we have to provide calculation to prove that water's not negatively gonna impact anything downstream. If it's not gonna impact anything downstream, the developer has the right to give himself a runoff letter. Because by the time it gets to the other side of his property, it starts dissipated and it's not gonna, like I said, make, uh, impact anything negative downstream. So we have that opportunity and for every phase, we recalculate if we're not gonna impact anything now, negative downstream. Once something gets impacted negatively downstream, we must provide for a detention pond. At that time, that's when we provide with it, provide it with a detention pond. Here, there's, there's multiple calculations to figure that out. So for a comment just to come and say, hey, move up your detention pond to an earlier phase, I mean, I can provide calculations to prove that it's not. All I want is that to happen at the one stop shop. If I prove that a detention pond is not needed, then I can provide myself a, a runoff letter. And it happens all the time. But again, the reasoning for that comment just to be put in there without actually having backup for it is what's concerning here.
Okay. Yes, sir, Kirby.
If I can ask Mr. Vial, have you ever, have you ever had to build a detention pond before it was needed?
Um, have I ever had to build a detention pond before it was needed? We have done it in some cases. Some clients, um, like Sanisito, Sanisito, uh, where North Central Park is. Sanisito decided to do a whole drainage study for their entire tract in one of their quadrants. And they went ahead and built a detention at the very beginning.
They did that on their own, but have you ever been required to build detention before you needed it?
Correct. Yeah, you've never been required to build detention before you needed.
So why are you concerned that you would be, you'd be required to do that here? That comment from, uh, the engineering department is there because those calculations have not yet been provided. And, and I don't think they've demonstrated in the past that they're, that they've ever asked you to build detention you didn't need. And so I think that comment is justified the way it is. But if the, if the applicant is concerned, I, my recommendation is still that we would table this item and have them work it out. Something as serious as detention, especially after a day like today when we're experiencing flooding in different parts of the city, is, I think, something we have to be very careful about. And, and my recommendation would still be that if they're uncomfortable with the comment, that we wait and, and table this so that they can figure it out and bring it back correct.
Well, I, I, I mean, I like to respond to that. Um. You saying this on the record that until calculations are, in other words, not building it until when it's needed. If we all understand that that's what the comment means, then I'll move forward with that comment. And it's, and it's on the, and it's on the record, exactly what, uh, what Mr. Kirby says. I don't mind moving forward with that, just as long as it's not just pinpointing a, a site, a, a phase and saying, you must build it in this phase because they said to move it up a phase. As long as the calculations, uh, uh, require a detention pond, then yes, we'll do it. So I, I agree to what, what Mr. Mr. Kirby said in that we can move forward with this comment as long as it's, it's understood that it's when it's, when it's needed.
Okay.
Only reason we required attention is because it's needed.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. And your calculations can prove, you know, when and what is needed. Uh, Rick. Does anybody else on the commission have any questions? Yeah. Call the people. Yeah. Okay. I'll call him because I'm gonna be, okay, bye. Okay, um. Any other questions from the commission members for anything on this particular item? All right. If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve subject to staff comments against the vocal interpretation between, uh, the parties.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Lugo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner De Valina. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Thank you. The next item is, uh, review and reconsideration of Celito Lindo subdivision master plan. The intent is residential, commercial, and institutional. The purpose of this revision is to modify two phases.
General overview, the applicant is TDB Holiday LLC. The engineer of record is Howland Engineering and Surveying. Approximately 582 acres located south of Obsidian Boulevard and east and west of Cuatro Vientos Road. The zoning is R1A, R2, R1B, R1MH, B1, and B3. The proposed use is a residential, commercial, industrial, I mean, uh, institutional. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Engineering, water utilities. Parks and leisure, utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. All right. Do we have the engineer record?
Ricardo Villarreal again, Howland Engineering. Um, I've read through the comments. If anybody has questions on the master plan, but we concur with, with the comments.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the engineer or for the staff? All right. With none heard, what are the wishes of the commission?
Is Ugalde making a motion to approve the item subject to the comments?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Doñas.
Doñas by second. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item that we have is, uh, consideration of the following, um, preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item A is, uh, preliminary consideration of the plat of La Fawn Residential Subdivision Phase One. Intent is residential. All right?
General overview, the applicant is AFW Investments Limited. The engineer of record is Premier Engineering and Surveying. 6.75 acres located west of Lomas del Sur Boulevard and north of River Hill Drive. The current zoning is B3. The proposed use is residential and the proposed number of lots is 32. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and engineering. Water utilities, traffic safety. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion. And the proposed motion.
All right. Do we, the engineer of record on the line?
Members of the commission, this is Juan Nivé. For the record, I have Mr. Armando Guerra from Premier Engineering on the line, available for any questions.
Okay. What about?
This is Armando Guerra with Premier Engineering for the record. Um, representing the client, we concur with staff comments.
Very good. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the engineer? Okay, well, no comments heard. What are the wishes to the commission?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve, subject to staff's comments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Ugalde.
Second by Ugalde. All those in fa, who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item. Preliminary consideration of the plot of Los Presidentes East Subdivision Phase Two. The intent is residential.
General overview, the applicant is JMLG Holdings Limited and MRMD Development. The engineer of record is Howland Engineering and Surveying. Twenty point one-seven acres located south of Los Presidentes Boulevard and east of Isla Mujeres. The current zoning is R1A and AG. The proposed use is residential, and the proposed number of lots is one hundred and thirty-seven. General location. Aerial view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. Engineering, fire, and these comments from water utilities which are highlighted, hopefully the engineer can see them in a moment. These were not included in the, in the packet.
And I can see, okay.
Traffic safety, parks and leisure, utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right. Engineer of record?
Members of the commission, this is Juan Nivé for the record. Ricardo Villarreal with Howland Engineering and Surveying is on the line, available for any questions.
All right, what about?
Can you, can you please read the notes for Mr. Villarreal?
Yes, let me go ahead and read, read those into the record. The comments from water utilities are number one, need to submit master plan for water and sanitary sewer. Number two, plan needs flows and demand identified along with conventions. Number three, need conceptual utility plan for water and sanitary mains to be looped. Number four, any offset improvements need to have easements. And number five, subject to further comments based on utility layouts submitted.
Good evening, this is Ricardo Villarreal. Uh, thank you for those additional comments. Uh, they, uh, the, uh, the project, uh, comments, I think we, we concur with all of them, including the, the ones that, that Mr. Vidal just mentioned. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has.
Okay. Does anybody on the commission have any questions from the engineer? All right, no questions. And what are the wishes of the commission?
Days make a motion to approve, subject to the staff's comments.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Not advice? We have a second from Commissioner Nadez. All those who are not in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the preliminary consideration of the plot of Celito Lindo Subdivision Phase Twenty-Three. The intent is residential.
Overview, applicant is TDB Holiday LLC. The engineer of record is Howland Engineering and Surveying. Approximately fourteen point forty-seven acres located east of US Highway Eighty-three and south of St. Luke Boulevard. The zoning is R1B. The proposed use is residential. The proposed number of lots, one hundred and sixty-one. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. Water and utilities and traffic safety. Parks and leisure and utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay, we have the engineer of record.
Members of the commission, Juan Nivé for the record, have Mr. Ricardo Villarreal on the line, available for any questions.
Um, again, good evening, commissioners, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Ricardo Villarreal. Um, this, uh, just to give a little background on this phase, in case any of y'all have been out there, this phase was part of which, go to the next one on the, on the next item. It's, it was originally Phase Twenty-Three. Um, the project is under construction right now, and what, um, what the client wanted to do was separate, um, the two projects into two phases. Um, so that, uh, I think the economy kind of, kind of led them to do this because of the takedowns of how many lots the builders are going to take. So what we wanted to do is, the reason for this is to record half of the subdivision faster than the other one. Uh, so again, it's under construction. Uh, we met with the City of Laredo, uh, Engineering Department, um, to discuss this and how we wanted to proceed with this. We all kind of came to the conclusion that the best way is to just to submit the both plots and have them clean plots as opposed to just keeping it as one and having a letter of credit for half of it, and just, uh, kind of have a recordation with a half a letter of credit. So this is a lot cleaner. Uh, again, it's under construction. The reason I, I give this background is because there is a comment on there by traffic. Um, and, and again, we still, we, we, we're going to go through the motions with this to explain everything more in detail at the one-stop shop. But the traffic safety department comment is most of the mayor too close. Three yards with centerline effect of less than three hundred feet shall be avoided, a light stream. Um, this project again, like I, like I mentioned earlier, is under construction. This is mainly, uh, uh, I guess like semantics, so that we can, uh, separate two projects and have a standalone project, so that we can record one or the other. Um, this project was, uh, already approved. It had already gone final approval. Like I said, under construction. Um, these street layouts and the master plan layouts were already approved before. That's why, uh, we're so far ahead of the game. So I kind of wanted, I don't know if there's anybody in the traffic, uh, from the traffic department, um, on the call or in this meeting, um, but just maybe to kind of further explain it that it's, it's kind of a, again, it's already being built, so it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, this, this has already been approved, so we, we can't realign it.
When you say, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Villarreal, may I ask a question of the engineer?
Go right ahead.
When you say this is under construction, you're talking about a phase that's not nearby. You're not talking about this phase, correct?
No, this phase. This phase was originally Phase Twenty-Three. And the intent for everything to go is to, everything to get built in Twenty-Three. Um, a little bit into construction, the developer came in and decided that it was much better to separate both, separate the construction in two phases, basically come to a good stopping point, uh, a good transition point, um, to stop both phases. Now, we needed to do Phase A first because it had the detention. So that one's going to go first before Phase B. Um, and so i- it's, it's, we've done this, we've done this before in, in previous projects. It's, has been handled differently, but I think with the agreement with, with the engineering department and the client, it's, it can't get any cleaner than this, and actually separating both plots, going back through the process, just so everybody can get, uh, a, a, a second look at the transition. So you can't just cut a street off and say, oh, okay, I'm going to stop here, just need to put plugs, fill all hydrants, you know, barricades, um, and then while the other one's being built at the same time. So they're just staggered. Um, we basically want to record half of it.
Mr. Villarreal?
To answer your, it, it, it's the current Phase Twenty-Three that currently has final approval right now.
Mr. Villarreal, have you already constructed Moses Loop?
Have I constructed Moses Loop? It's under construction right now.
Has the street been built?
Excuse me, I'm sorry?
Has the street been built, Moses Loop?
No, completely no.
Completely? What percent of it has been built?
I would say right now, it's probably...
The road itself, not, not the phase.
As a project, as a project in whole, probably like fifteen percent as a project in whole. Um, just because a lot of things come before the street actually gets built, utilities, so on and so forth.
Well, I'm just trying to ascertain how difficult it would be to put Moses Loop on the other side of, of, uh, lots fifty-eight and fifty-nine. So that you have more space and you can meet that three-hundred-foot requirement. If it's impossible, um, I just want to hear you on the record, say that you can. If you can't, I think that gives the commission good information, but if it's possible, that's what the, the, um, traffic department's asking for, is the three-foot, three-hundred-feet separation between those two.
So you're saying to move Moses Loop to each of lots seventeen and eighteen?
On the other side of lots fifty-eight and fifty-nine, so that you have a little more, it goes a little more to the east, and you have a, a little more separation between Moses Loop and Amy.
Oh, if we move it to the other side, uh, Mr. Chairman, it, it goes into the commercial tracks on the other side. Um, and also, it would be close to the Hidal Road. So if you look at our master plan that just got approved with this layout here, um, if you look at that master plan that shows the roads here, and you can see a Hidal maybe about four hundred, five hundred feet east of Moses Loop. I don't know if, uh, if, if we can pull that master plan back up. I don't know how easy it might be.
My recommendation would be that if it's, that this would have been something we should have caught before. Uh, we have a new traffic director. They're looking a little closer at some of these things. And so this was approved previously. They've already gone forward, uh, with these plans. It wouldn't be, it sounds like it wouldn't be possible at this point to redesign the project. Unfortunately, it's not ideal. We do have some of these in the city, quite, you know, too many. Uh, in the future, though, it is something that's very important in the traffic department to follow, to follow those offset minimums. So I, I, my recommendation here would be to, um, if the commission needs to strike that comment, that that's acceptable, given that this has already been approved previously.
Very good. Okay. Is there anything else in there, uh, Rick, that you, uh, have any, any concerns about on, on the staff comments?
No, sir, that was the only one, sir. Everything else, uh, we concur with, uh, staff comments.
Very good, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for either Kirby or for the engineer of record? None heard? Then what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the following comments, striking, what was it?
Uh, number one.
Uh, striking traffic safety comment number one.
Days second. The second, all right? All those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Uh, consideration of the model subdivision compliance. We have eight A, consideration of the model subdivision rules, compliance with the plot of Los Presidentes East Subdivision Phase One, intent is residential.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe you skipped item seven D, which was the Phase Twenty-Three, pardon me.
Sorry, you're right, Twenty-Three B. Going back, I'm sorry. Preliminary consideration of the plot of Celito Lindo, Phase Twenty-Three, Part B.
Overview, applicant TDB Holiday LLC. The engineer of record, Howland Engineering and Surveying.
Bravo. In the interest of time, can we just say that this is the second phase of the project?
We just... This is the second phase of the project, yes.
Yeah, that's it. Okay. Any questions for anybody from the commission? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Days make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, striking the same comment as the previous item.
Second, Ugalde.
Ugalde, okay, good. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those that are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Then the next item is the, uh, consideration of the model subdivision rule compliance with the plot of Los Presidentes East Subdivision Phase One, intent is residential.
The applicant, JMLG Holdings Limited, engineer of record, Howland Engineering and Surveying. Nineteen point forty-six acres located east of Cuatro Ventos Road and south of Tabasco Drive. Zoning, R1A, proposed use residential. The proposed number of lots is one twenty-five. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed plat. And the proposed motion.
Very good. Do I hear a motion from the commissioners?
This should be.
I'm sorry?
Did you want to hear?
Motion for approval?
Uh, this is Ugalde, motion for approval.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Valina, all those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, director's comments.
Yes, sir. Well, first I want to, uh, Kirby Snideman here, planning director. Want to welcome our newest planning commission, commissioner on the record here. Commissioner Dovalina, would you like to introduce yourself to the planning commission and to the viewing public? You're muted. There you go.
Thank you, uh, uh, it's a pleasure to serve. I'm always glad to serve, uh, the community and have, continue to have, uh, simple experience of administration. Many years ago, at some point in time, I was a city man. Uh, I know some of the folks that are on there are known, uh, their forefathers, and have had experience working with the city. Through them, and look forward to, uh, helping in any way that I can, uh, to serve the community.
Commissioner Dovalina sat down with us today virtually, and we provided a training and orientation for him. Turned out, he, he gave us some training as well from his vast years of experience. We're grateful to have him on the commission. He serves as all of you do by, as a volunteer. And your time is very valuable. We appreciate that. You don't get paid for what you do. So thank you very much. Now, one last comment I want to make is, we have a planner with us tonight who is retiring after twenty-nine years of service. Tomorrow is his last day. Fernando Morales has been a lecturer here at the planning department, and we want to, uh, we want to present him with, thanking him for his service. And we also would like to share some of his wisdom with us, mine, planning commission. Fernando? Fernando, you're...
Congratulations on your challenge.
Congratulations. Fernando, congratulations.
We're having just a little difficulty, yep. Fernando? Come on over.
Good job. Twenty-nine years, a long time.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure serving the commission.
Thank you. Thank you, and we wish you well at the retirement. You enjoy it.
Thank you so much.
Hats off, Fernando. Fernando has always been an amazing help, and he's a damn good man, and I wish him nothing but the best.
Thank you so much.
Fernando, I remember you when you first started there.
Yes.
Many year, many years ago. Yes.
Twenty-nine years ago.
Yes, exactly.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for the plug. Thank you.
We're, we're really going to miss him in the office. We're going to miss him a lot.
Yes, we will.
Well, we're going to have to...
Thank you.
We're going to have to do a happy afternoon with Fernando sometime soon, once everybody can... We're going to have to do a happy afternoon, Fernando, sometime soon once everybody can get around each other.
Yep, yep.
That would be great.
I agree.
Thank you, commissioners, very much.
All right. We'll see you all.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you.
Everybody be safe.
Thank you.